I will call the meeting to order. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Solly?
Yes.
Collison?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Yerkey?
Yes. Citizens comments. If you're not on the agenda, you may speak to the council at this point. Hearing that, we have no public hearings tonight. We have reading and approval of minutes from June 25th.
I move approval of the three minutes from June 25th.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We have the condensed version of the same June 25th minutes.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the June 25th minutes.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And we have the consent agenda consisting of the audit of city bills, the pay assessment number 22 for Magnette Construction for the water treatment plant, June transit report. Kind of down in June, but we were we're still up for the year from last year. Gambling reports from the Eagles. And the Hockey Association. And an exempt permit from Assumption Church. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Any discussion or questions on any of the items?
I just have one question. It has to do with line item 26. More of a process probably question. Thirty eight hundred dollars and sixty cents. It's a ability to treat the quick lime. That quick lime, is that the same quick lime that we're that they're selling or that Mikesel's are using?
That's, this is the lime for the water plant.
This is the lime?
Yep, the lime. And then what Mikesel's getting is the waste lime after it's done.
Oh, okay.
Yep. So this is, this is for a load of lime.
Yeah, I see there's several different pills for chemicals and
Yep.
and such. So be sure of all chemicals with the process.
Is that like a monthly? Are those monthly then?
Uh, depends on the supply. You know, so they, I think they got the initial, they got the initial load of lime that they, they needed to get up and running, and then it's going to be ongoing. As they need lime, they'll get deliveries.
But then like line item 28 and line item 32, those are all for the water treatment?
Right, so there's different chemicals or so.
But is that, so that's the same thing? Those are not necessarily a monthly?
Right.
How about the line item 10, the ag lime Eagles ball field? I mean, we're disposing of a load of lime a week. Is there, and that's ag lime. What's being disposed of with Mikesel is being spread on the agricultural fields. I mean, I'm just curious. We're paying one guy to get rid of our lime, and we're paying twenty three hundred dollars and eighty two, twenty three eighty two for lime. I mean, is it?
It's totally different.
It's different stuff.
You'd have a white infield.
Yeah. Yeah, it's totally different products.
But it's, it's a different product. I mean, it's not, I assumed it was. Apples and apples, right? Yeah.
I think the ball would get stuck.
Wouldn't be hurting for it as much, Wally.
You wouldn't have to worry about a ball. You could just walk in and pick it out of the sludge.
If it rained, it would be pretty bad.
I think so.
Probably. Uh, any other questions on any of the items on the consent agenda?
When I see the, the payment out, is this the final payment for the water treatment plan minus our reserve or what we're retaining?
Uh, no, I think there's still a few things left to be done. They still have the demolition of the old water plant and those kind of things. But then it should be coming pretty quick. I saw that they're um, digging out the one well nearest the bypass. You know, they get rid of that little wellhouse and stuff, but they still have to take down the water treatment.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, if you look at the, um, the, actually the payment number 22 page, uh, you can see that the, the contract was fifteen million nine sixty eight and the, um, total earned to date was fifteen five. So it's a little, little short. Well, depends how you look at it. Lot short, little short. In the grand scheme of things, they're getting close. Any other questions on any of the items on the consent agenda? All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We have no petitions, requests, or communications, ordinance, and resolutions. We have a resolution approving a five-year transit system plan, which we will talk about.
And so we have Lee Nichols here. Uh, they're from the consulting engineering firm that actually worked on the five-year plans for pretty much the whole state of Minnesota, right?
Yes, we, uh, we've been hired by MinDOT. Uh, we've been hired to do the central region, which includes Donnie, Yon, Morris, but Rebel Rider, TriCap, Detroit Lake, uh, Detroit Lake, that's where I'm going today, um, Becker County, Wadena County, and Transit Alternatives were our six agencies that we've been applying for. And then there's three other consultants that are doing the other twenty-two providers in the state. I have a, just a brief little presentation to go through.
Okay.
To just, to highlight some of the, you know, the, uh, results of the, the plan. Um, I know we, I think I gave you from August or September last year to give you an initial overview of what we were doing with the plan. So really, you know, on, on page two of the handout, you know, the, the results, these five-year transit system plans resulted from the Greater Minnesota Transit Investment Plan. And, you know, that plan, the goals of that plan was to improve coordination of services to meet transportation needs, increase ridership, uh, across the state, and anticipate and plan for future funding levels, uh, to achieve service expansion and service levels. So that's why we developed these plans for each of the agencies in the state. And each, each document is unique to each system. So we, we provide some backgrounds and historical information, and then a strategic focus from years 2020 to 2025 that includes a capital constraint and un-constrained plan, and also an operations constrained and un-constrained plan for the next five years. You see on page three, this is the region that we were responsible for, WSB, uh, the central region, and our six agencies in there. And, you know, Morris, uh, next page is the Morris service area, um, that we focused on for your plan. And this gives you just an overview of our schedule. We started everything back in July of 2018. Uh, we delivered, you know, the first draft chapters were delivered in Au- in October. Our second deliverable in March, and then the final plans here at the end of June. So in our, we're still, our contract runs to the end of September, so if there are any additions or changes or modifications to the document, we are still available to do the updates that's needed based on this meeting, or if you read through the document and there's some additional updates you want to make, we definitely can add those. These documents are intended to be living documents, so they're never truly final. They definitely want, MinDOT definitely wants to see them um, used and modified and updated in future years. So really, our table of contents, uh, this is, these are consistent across all of our documents. One thing MinDOT wanted, even though each, each plan is unique, they wanted to have consistency across the board for the document. So they did set our table of contents. Uh, so you kind of see here chapters one through eleven. And when we presented back in August or September, we really focused on chapters two through four, which is just kind of some existing conditions of where your transit system is today. But what I want to focus on today is chapters six through nine. Is really looking at your annual needs, the system performance, your operations plan, the constrained, unconstrained operations, and then the financials. So you look at the next five years, uh, what your financial projections are, and your local match, percent of local match that's needed to achieve what you put in your capital and operating plans. So first, we want to get to here on page nine is your bus replacement plan. And basically from years 2018 to 2025, basically adding a new bus every other year. Uh, so we have, you know, the bus here in 2019, so your next new bus would be in 2021, and 2023, 2025. And this is factored into that five-year capital plan. So other items that are identified for the constraint plan, this is, you know, things that we definitely want to see happen on the next five years. Uh, we have your fleet replacement plan, which is about, you know, just under three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars for the years 2018 to 2025. Uh, two thirty-foot electric buses that's programmed for implementation in 2024, uh, along with two charging stations, uh, again in 2024. And then dispatching and scheduling software is programmed for 2020. Now, you'll see the abstract there, and due to the nature of software and how variable the price could be, we couldn't really put a price on that. So that's not actually in the capital plan numbers, but we did program it in there for, you know, 2020 implementation. And mention that that's something that the transit agency is looking to add is that dispatching software. So the unconstrained plan for capital, this is the wish list. This is if we get extra money, what can we do with that? Um, so it's your wish list items. And these can be moved up into your constrained money at any time. Uh, we didn't really have any fleet needs identified, um, but we did look at, want to look at bus stops um, to be added in strategic areas of the city. Um, and then an expansion of the bus storage and operations facility. Uh, that, you know, the bus stops programmed for 2020, just over fifty-five thousand. And then expansion of the bus facility in 2025, a rough estimate of about four hundred fifty thousand dollars for that. Uh, and there's some technology items, um, improved fare collection software in 2021, and then solar panels for the bus garage uh, programmed for 2025. And again, due to the nature of these components and the uncertainty in price, we weren't really able to put a price tag on those. Uh, the operations plan, uh, yes, if there's any questions, please feel free to stop me. I want to definitely be just informal. If I'm going too fast, I'm going to rush through things sometimes.
Just one quick comment. Bus stops are physical structures that would be put up, like maybe at Willie's, maybe along the sidewalk, instead of people trying to get in and out of there, or at the university, so the students know where to go to actually get on the bus. It's one of the discussions that we wound up having with them.
I shouldn't have said stops, more of us shelters. Stops and shelters. So it's not just, you know, a whole bus stop, a formal shelter to keep people out of the alleys. So the operations plan, constrained items that are identified is the dedicated, adding a dedicated dispatcher for, for all service hours. So you have somebody physically, you know, taking calls and dispatching buses during your service hours. Um, that's going to cost about sixty-nine thousand dollars in year 2020. And that's really the only constrained item that we identified in the operations plan. And we did come up with several unconstrained items, you know, the wish list items. Uh, we have a service, weekend service plan increase. Um, this would be increase Saturday service span by four hours and Sunday by one and a half hours. That would add, you know, one, one vehicle in service, um, about just around thirteen thousand dollars annually, and we had that scheduled for 2021. And then a new, uh, I shouldn't say fixed route, more than deviated fixed route, but what we're, what we're talking about with this new, you know, fixed route or deviated fixed route is you'd have a route with a dedicated path to the city. If you flip to page fourteen, um, you can get an idea of what, what this route could look like. This is kind of what we sketched up. But this would be a route that would have dedicated stops where you had those shelters. Uh, where people would know the bus would be there either within every hour or thirty minutes, but the bus also has the capability to deviate off that route to do any pickups. So what this does is it gives the people, your, your riders the ability to, well, I need to go over here to the grocery store, and I can be picked up, but I, I can, I don't have to sit there, okay, pick me up and get in thirty minutes. I can do my shopping, because I know there's going to be a bus that's going to stop at, you know, in, within an hour. So they're not rushing. They can take their time. They can go to restaurants or, you know, really kind of anywhere, but it gives them some dedicated areas where they can be picked up and time points where they know the bus will be there. So it kind of will, you know, can alleviate some of your dispatching needs. Uh, but it gives people some flexibility, especially the students, if they know that, you know, every hour they'll be picked up on campus and taken to McDonald's or the grocery store where they need to go. That's why we're kind of looking at that deviated fixed route. Um, that would run from eleven to three, Monday through Friday, year round. Uh, it's about one vehicle and about just under fifty thousand dollars annually for this service. And we programmed that in for, uh, 2022. And then also we had a staffing item in the unconstrained plan, uh, to have a dedicated, uh, weekend dispatcher for the service hours. So basically a dispatcher on the weekend to match the service hours that you're running. And that's about forty-three hundred dollars additional to, um, the, uh, I think we have, you know, sixty, sixty-nine thousand dollars for the dispatcher, so additional, just under forty-three hundred dollars for the dispatcher in 2021. So I guess any questions on the constrained or un-constrained plan?
Um, how did you come up with the eleven to three, we have time for, on the fixed route service?
We, thus do, we're discussing with Deb, and Deb and Lang, with our discussions, period, that would be, you know, a good strategic times. It's, uh, you know, it, it's, it's one of those things you can roll it out. It's not a large service span at a fairly minimal cost, but if you find it successfully, you can easily increase those service hours if you need to. So you can almost run it as a, you know, maybe a trial of six months or a year from the eleven to three, see what your ridership is and how it's perceived, and then you can always expand on those service hours. So it's more of a, kind of a, let's, let's roll it out, see what it works. Um, and then, you know, expand if necessary. And then next, on page fifteen, we kind of get into your projected needs and revenues. Um, this is for the constrained plan for 2020, 2025. You can see the estimated operating costs, um, and capital costs, and total costs. And then the final column on the first table is the estimated local match that's needed. Um, and then your second table is your fare box revenues. And you notice that we have contract revenues as NA, uh, it's because your contract revenues are rolled into your fare box revenues. That's how it's reported. So that's, so any of your fare box revenue does include your contract revenue. So you can see your estimated total revenues for the next five years starts, you know, about a hundred thousand dollars in 2020 to just over a hundred sixteen thousand in 2025. And then we roll in, you know, you look at your, we look at the estimated local match that's needed from the first table, and your total revenues, and we look at where you're at for your local match for the next five years. So you can kind of see 2020, you're over a hundred percent, so you're going to have some extra funds left over. 2021, you're just under eighty-eight percent. Um, and then 2024, a little lower, and 2025. So you have some more, that's when you start rolling those major capital investments in those later years, which causes, you know, your local match to, uh, those revenues aren't meeting those local match at that time. But again, you know, these are, this whole plan is meant to, so you can plan these out, schedule, you know, where you're going to need to find increases and so forth. And again, you know, these may change based on your needs which you afford with the implementation of the service. So on the next page, we, uh, have the unconstrained plan. So this rolls in all your, the wish list items that are identified. Um, same con- same concept, you know, identify, your first table looks at your operating costs and capital costs, and estimate your local match. Uh, fare box revenues, and then, you know, basically the final third table shows, you know, if you implement everything in your unconstrained plan, where's your local match? Where you're coming out of your local match for the next five years. And again, you're, you're, you're close, you know, ninety-three percent in eight percent, uh, 2022, you're over a hundred, you had a hundred and four. So you can kind of see where you're at in the local match. If you implement everything that we have in the document, local strain and everything. And any questions on that? And then finally, uh, one thing that MinDOT's wanting all, all the agencies to do is still looking at performance measures. Uh, these, they're going to start, they want all the agencies to track them, and they're going to start, you know, wanting on the annual grants, uh, reporting of the performance measures. The one thing to note is MinDOT is not going to tie any funding, you know, for your service to the performance measures. Uh, it's just so they can track and compare each agency kind of apples to apples. So there's six required, uh, performance measures, and then three additional that are optional. And we kind of came up with three additional that can fit, um, the service here in Morris. So the six required, on-time performance, passengers per hour, cost per service hour, cost per trip, uh, trip denials, and, uh, percentage of communities with baseline span of service. So really, everything you're doing really well. Uh, your on-time performance is a hundred percent. You're exceeding the minimum, the, the goal, the target of three passengers per hour, you have five point six. Uh, your cost per service hour is about half what the target is. Um, and then your cost of trip, cost per trip is about half of what the target is. So the, the system is doing really well. Uh, the one thing is, you know, you know, currently, you're not tracking denials. Um, but we provided Deb with a spreadsheet that MinDOT put together to help track those denials. And if you do get, um, dispatching and scheduling software, a lot of those softwares have the capability to track denials, uh, within the software. Um, and again, your, your service area, you know, you're, you've got, you know, meet ninety percent of your service span. So overall, the system's doing really well. Um, and in the three, in the additional ones, we use like the service hours per capita. Um, the target is point four five, your two point two, your fare box recovery is at twenty-two percent, and then no recorded accidents. So overall, the system is doing really well. Um, and I, you know, compared to a lot of the other systems we're looking at, you know, Morris is always, you know, right at the top. Um, I mean, it's, it's a small community, but the amount of service you provide, the rubbish that you have. I mean, it's a really, it's a model, uh, transit system for the area. Um, so yeah, you're doing really well in terms of performance measures. Uh, and that's it. Like I said, it's a brief presentation, and I'd be happy to have any questions, pick any questions, or if you have any comments.
Let's consider denials. That you're talking about.
Um, a great denial is if, say, somebody calls and the area bus is, you're at capacity, you can't get somebody there to pick them up at a particular time, or it's outside your service, well, if it's within your service hours, if it's outside your service hours, it's not a denial. But if something happens within your scheduled service hours, and somebody, you're unable to pick them up due to, you know, whether, you know, you, you don't, you can't get a bus driver out there, you know, maintenance issue where you can't pick them up, you know, those are considered denials.
Is it, it's considered enough if you don't pick it up on their requested time?
I think there's, there's a window.
There's a window?
There's a window. I'd want to say, I think there's a forty-five minute window. I read that somewhere. I think it's like a forty-five minute window, um, where you can, to afford pickup.
Sure.
And I think that's, yeah, I think that's in here, is the, for the on-time performance is a forty-five minute window. Uh, so you have forty-five minutes.
So what would be like the target, your target for this percentage of the denials, and what's your target for that? Or is this all new for this?
Yeah, you're, the target for the denials, I don't have that in there. Unfortunately, I don't know it off the top of my head. Um, but I can, I can, I can get that for you. Unfortunately, I don't have, don't have that number, the number on it, unfortunately.
I thought the reason for referring to denials was to find out if you need to expand your service. If we're denying a lot, if we're hot down the show, that we need to have more buses on at eight o'clock. And we don't track, no, very well, because we do have very few denials. People are always willing to go ten minutes earlier, ten minutes later. And this, this really works well for the community.
So like it's kind of hard then to track them, like that, if we shut down, if they don't run at an eight. But do you consider that a denial if they're not going to get a pick? Really not going to, really consider that a denial?
Yeah, I don't think it's really considered a denial. And I don't believe they track the denials, I don't say your scheduled service hours. But it is something to keep an eye on. Um, like Deb mentioned, if there, if you are seeing a lot of people requesting rides, say for example, it's Saturday the three, and you're not running a service, those technically aren't denials. Uh, but if you're, you're seeing that, that could be a, a chance to expand your service hour.
Is that tracked right now, kind of that, when people are calling for rides and?
I do have a list, whatever it's on. But in this community, everyone seems to know our system, and when we are there, and when we are busy. So they know before they even call that we're going to be busy at eight, we're going to be busy at three. So they make sure they have their doctor's appointments for elderly at the other times. So it's hard to know if they would have called at that time, or?
You know, I found, I found it kind of interesting as I read through the demographics that you provided in here, that, uh, Morris has a higher population of people over sixty-five, nineteen percent versus the state average, which is fifteen. Um, and then our median household income is about forty-seven thousand, let's say, which is lower than the state average. So when you, when you look at that type of information, I would assume that would help probably to improve this program.
Yes, because usually you're, you know, the lower income, the higher, you know, elderly population is a sign of transit dependency. They'll be more likely to use the system.
You know, probably your own increase unless something happens drastically to their income.
Yeah, we're seeing that, you know, really across the country, um, you know, where people are, you know, the demographics are getting older. Um, and, you know, there's that need for transit or some mobility other than driving is occurring.
I could be long and obvious in that, sir.
Sixty-five, you.
But also a college town. I mean, in the front page of the Marquette paper today, the very same thing we're talking about right now with the, the college population and the huge gap with the rent, uh, the housing, the not having a vehicle for transportation, that it was exactly what we talked about, had presentations on for us with the college town, that a student going to school is not going to have a big income. They're going to be more dependent on our services.
Also, as we educate being green.
Yeah.
Or people should be ready to transit. Even if they take their bike with them.
Well, I'm really excited to see that, looking at some expansion on the Sunday, Saturdays combination, just to seeing what, and I, to seeing that, being flexible to possibly expand or to, to, to what the demand is. And then looking at these numbers where we're at that fifty percent and seventy percent on the local matches, but then also plugging in new buses in 2024 of five hundred and fifty thousand, or new shelters, just the, the huge expenses that if we get some help from some other sources, that'll, that'll make those numbers look a lot better for us going forward, so.
Yeah, and I think that's the whole purpose of the plan, is so you program these out, and you can, exactly what you're saying, is that we're going to be short here, so how can we get ahead of that and make up that shortfall? So when it, when 2024, you know, hits, you're ready to go.
Good information.
Lot of information, Ben, yes. Makes sense.
Thank you, Lee.
Well, thank you very much.
Thanks, Lee.
So we do have a resolution to approve this five-year transit system plan.
I'll move on the resolution approving a five-year transit system. I'll move on to the resolution approving the five-year transit system plan.
A little second. Any further discussion? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Someone for solving?
Yes.
Waller?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Ferguson?
Yes.
There he is.
Yes. So city managers' report.
Um, I'll touch on a couple things, water plants, still, uh, they're still working out a few of the little, little glitches with it. Uh, anytime you have a, a big new system like that, um, you're bound to have a few things happen. So they are working on a couple deals, but, um, as a general rule, I haven't heard much of anything from anybody. Uh, I've actually had some compliments from people, uh, including somebody from Alberta, who noticed that they now have soft water that they didn't realize before. And, you know, when you, when you wind up getting it, then, then, uh, you know it right away. Um, so basically, we're, we're, uh, we're just moving along, and they're finishing up the things that have to happen at, at the plant. And then originally, the, the, um, substantially completed date was supposed to be April fifteenth. And then, uh, from that date, they had two months to finish all the landscaping and all that kind of stuff, and to tear down the old building. But as we know, that didn't happen by April fifteenth. I think we actually started producing water June fifth, was the first day that we, we were able to, to actually produce water. So they are behind, uh, that kind of gives you an idea of where they're at, uh, timeline-wise. And before the contracts finalized out, we'll come back and have a discussion with them about, you know, where we're at and what happened. And we know that there is some dewatering problems right away, uh, when, when they started digging. And we know that there are some issues with weather this, this last winter, starting in about December. But it's pretty much where they're at, uh, the guys are doing a good job learning the system and, uh, understanding how everything works and identifying, uh, if there's issues with different pieces of equipment that, that they have to tweak them and then get them all set in. Chris Swanson, I actually talked to him at the League Conference, he said typically it'll take a few months, once a new plant's up and running, to get everything dialed in the way you need it. We, we know that the, the hardness level of the water that's coming out of the plant is down where, where they thought it was going to be. It fluctuates a little bit depending on whether or not they have an issue with one of the systems or, or another. But, uh, they, we've seen it down as low as five grains of hardness coming out of the plant, which is what we talked about in the beginning. Um, I know, um, pretty much all the major, big users have probably made their adjustments. I did talk to, uh, one of the water softener companies about that. Um, I've talked to a lot of people that have indicated, you know, what they're doing with their water softeners. But, uh, we, we, uh, we just need to make sure it's all dialed in before, before we finalize what we say to everybody. Uh, League of Minnesota Cities Conference, very good conference this year, there's some very good speakers. Communication's going to be a big thing, actually, the keynote speaker they had there put on a very, very good presentation on the difference between baby boomers and millennials and, and, uh, um, different, you know, how, how, it, it was very interesting. You know, because, uh, if you, you know, like for me, being a baby boomer, what we grew up with compared to what young people are growing up with now. You know, the, the technology that's there now and all those kind of things, and as we're dealing with people, and we, and we've talked about that ourselves, as we're dealing with people, how do we reach out to them? You know, is it the newspaper, is it, uh, Twitter, is it Snapchat, you know, what is it going to be? And I don't know that anybody's found a solution to that yet. Because, uh, in some cases, people aren't really looking for that kind of information that we're giving out in the first place. So it's, it's something that everybody is working on, and they're trying to get a better feel for how to do it. But just the idea that, you know, you have people that don't understand what it was like maybe not to have a TV to watch. You know, whenever you wanted to watch it, because there's only one in the living room, and you probably didn't want to go in there. You know, like when I grew up, that's kind of the way it was. So, so that was good. And then one of the interesting things was that, uh, the governor decided to come. Uh, he actually wasn't scheduled to be there, but, uh, he decided that he needed to be there, and so they actually rearranged the schedule. And Governor Walz came and spoke to the group, uh, it was a very good turnout up there. And, um, he gave a really good insight into what happened in the session and how they concluded it. He's an old football coach, and he said, well, we didn't really have a special session, we just played a little bit of overtime to get the game over. And, uh, he said they, they, uh, they had to give in a little bit here, and they had to give in a little bit there. And that's the way he wanted to see it end, and he wanted to make sure it ended. And, uh, as we know, he gave up on the, the gas tax right at the end, and he did that in order to get, get a settlement on the, on the session. And, uh, he looks forward to working with the legislature in the future. So that was a very good understanding, but he's, he's very interested in making sure that, um, everybody has a say and that they try to cooperate. And especially when it came to, uh, the commissioners. And I think that was a big thing that, that I took away from there, that he wants commissioners to get out of their offices and get out and know and understand who's out there in the state. And, and, uh, I know John Linkstein did a good job of doing that, coming out to us versus us going down to St. Paul to meet with them. And, uh, the district engineers do a good job of doing that with MINDOT, coming out to us and not having us go to them. So a lot of good information came, came off through that meeting. Working on budgets, uh, Ben's going to be down here pretty quick. I think the next council meeting, we're probably going to have Ben here, and then maybe one or two of the German interns, uh, just to say hi and kind of tell you what they've been working on. And Ben will be leaving for, for, uh, his PhD program, so it's going to be sad to see him go. He's been a big part of the, the city office. Um, yeah. And then, uh, just the last note there on there is, uh, I sat down with Reggie, and we talked a little bit about, um, we've got a contract that needs to be renewed on the school, school resource officer. So he's going to be meeting with the new superintendent and just talk about, you know, what, what happens in the school, what does that position do? Um, what do we need, you know, as far as a police department with, with personnel and scheduling and all those kind of things? Just to make sure that everything fits the way it needs to be, be done for us and for them. So, uh, uh, I don't know if the new superintendent started yet, but, uh, Reggie will reach out and talk to the new superintendent. That's all I got.
Great. Any other, uh, business to come before the council?
Uh, just a couple housekeeping things, uh, walking by Killer Music Hall the other day, I seen there's, uh, maybe I passed along to June Lane, there's some of her feed, uh, wrote on the walls.
Oh, really?
Piece, and, you know, they be sighing, and, and the paint is chipping off the wall and bottom, and it's just, generally, it's just dirty. You know, we started that talent contest, uh, last Thursday, so I think that probably needs to be addressed.
Good point, good point.
And I was just wondering on the sidewalk plan, I see we're doing, uh, some work on the boulevards or on the ends of the streets on Seventh Street there. Just in general, where are we at with our sidewalks in town? I know we talked about that, we had a plan, and I'm just wondering, are we, are we doing anything with sidewalks?
Not, not really yet, you know, and actually Seventh Street, uh, the, the irony with that is they're replacing all the handicap crossings. That's what they're doing, even though the, uh, you know, like Sixth Street was just done too long ago, but they're replacing all the handicap, uh, corners. Uh, but, but no, we don't, we don't have a plan in place for dealing with sidewalks.
I know, we were on that park two year, well, a year ago, and we identified that one chunk of sidewalk there, where we, right there on California and Eighth Street.
Right.
You know, we damaged that chunk, and we must have taken out that tree, I think the roots pulled up. I think we should maybe address that, because that, that corner in particular, you know, the daycare kids are coming down on the street and they're crossing, I think right by the rain, Morgan's driveway, instead of going down to the crosswalk, it's just not.
Well, and as we try to promote our hundred ninety-nine energy efficient, walking would be one of them, and when the sidewalks are in, really, some of them are really bad. Um, you can't expect people to walk and try to trip over, and so, I mean, what is the, is there a point, or?
Well, sidewalks are the responsibility of the property owners, so.
So at what point do we require a property owner to replace that?
When we identify that they're substandard, we can send them a letter, just like we would with snow removal or anything else. Uh, one, one of the things that we identified was looking at main routes.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so Oregon Avenue is done now, so that should be on the one side, it should be completely done all the way to Seventh Street. We were going to do California Avenue, because there's one block and one lot that needs to be done. And, uh, and then, you know, we, we lost our, uh, concrete contractor when Riverview couldn't do it anymore. So that's one of the things that we're trying to identify. I know F and S is coming into town, but unless you have a really big project that you're going to put together for them to bid on, it's really hard. I think we identified another contractor that can do sidewalk work, especially smaller sidewalk work. But, uh, there are some really bad sidewalks out there, um, I know in our neighborhood, somebody literally built a ramp on the sidewalk. Because there's a great big huge silver maple tree that pushed up the sidewalk so bad that you can't even get on it, but they built, I don't know if you noticed that, Jeff, but.
I rode my bike over it too.
They built a, they built a wooden ramp to transition that sidewalk. And, uh, so it's a matter of going around, identifying them, and trying to figure out, um, you know, we talked at one point about maybe putting together a plan to try to fund sidewalks for people, like a special assessment project. And we could try to do that and identify some, some money to do that.
I think we're probably going to, maybe, I think we should go along that path, because it's just, if we can talk.
Because we do have, we have a sidewalk map that has all the sidewalks in Morris that, and that, that were rated out. And so you can actually go back and look at that and update it, and maybe that's one of the things we should do first, is just update it and see where all the bad ones are.
Now, if we declared a section of sidewalk, if you will, that is like a, what did you call it, like a snow, not a snow machine, but a main travel route, would there be any state money available for that?
No, nah, depends on if you're doing a state aid project, but, but, but I think, you know, what I, what I was identifying is if there's no sidewalk there. Uh, I know it's, it's really, sometimes it's hard to go to people and say, okay, now we're going to put a sidewalk in, you've never had one, uh, and then we're going to make you pay for it. You know, that, so it's easier for us to put it in, I think, to complete the route. You know, like California Avenue should be a route all the way to Seventh Street. And then we talked about, uh, and it'll be back in the budget this year, uh, this upcoming budget to do Green River Park. And then we can connect up California, and we can connect up Oregon Avenue, so that we have those links, and then we'll connect up the bike path on Columbia Avenue. But, uh, we can go around, because there's, I mean, you can identify some really bad ones. Actually, on Seventh Street, I know there's a couple bad spots. You know, I've been walking with a pregnant woman and her little kid in a stroller, and you can find them out really quick when you're trying to push a stroller down a sidewalk, and you can't get through because the, the sidewalk's so bad, you have to go on the road, and then you have to come back in.
Yeah, I guess it'd be a safety issue, right, of course, we know college is, I'll, I'll assess it now, but it's, the, when the fall comes, of course, the sidewalk, there, you need to use a lot more, it's going to be a lot of watching traffic, so, yeah. All right, that's all I have.
Do you know how long, uh, Seventh Street will be, uh, how long that project will take?
Um, I don't know that we know the end date of it. They'll do the, they'll do all the concrete work first, and then once all that's done, then they'll come in and they'll do the, the roadwork.
Because that's just going to be a, a mill?
They're going to mill it up and then, um, relay it.
Yeah, okay, that, that'll kind of get rid of the crown and?
Yeah, and then it'll fix the problem over by the entrance to the university where the water is actually coming down the gutter line, and it's crossing over Seventh Street to the north side. And then it kind of washed that whole area out, but yeah, it'll fix all that.
Well, we also do a lot of curb and gutter with this project?
No.
Okay, good.
No.
Good, anything else to come before the council? Meeting adjourned.